Sharon had.
Even with insurance.
Not unless y'all ask.
Sharon had done surgery.
The planning board has passed on it unanimously.
Remember our part. It's over six thousand dollars for thirty minutes of surgery.
There's something about that that's not.
I looked through it. I was trying to find that one oh eight about refunding fees. I can't find it in.
I read.
Section one oh eight. I could. I thought y'all were going to have to play to the cameras.
This, this is like, um, some of it too. Crowd protest. Looks like you got a thousand people. A lot of people. All about. I think we got more people today. We got more people up here than we do out there. Well, and what is it? Laura was on the side, uh, when she, and you get those little, uh, little wedges. Not in.
Easy now, easy. All right. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. It is, uh, maybe a minute past five o'clock. We're going to get started tonight and, uh, I don't ever remember us having this sort of situation. We have more people up here than is in our audience tonight. But, but those of you that are here, we welcome you and, uh, you've been a, Kenny especially, you, you've been here through all of this, the budget and all the issues related and, um, thank you for your support and those that, that are joining you tonight and, uh, we thank you for that. Uh, we are on Facebook and YouTube, so we welcome those of you folks at home who have joined us. This is a, uh, special call meeting of the Randolph County Board of Commissioners and we are officially in open session right now. Um, we don't have many special call meetings, but a couple of issues that need some attention and, uh, we felt like this would be a good time to do that. Uh, we have basically three matters on our agenda tonight. One is to, uh, deal with the request from the hospital for some advanced funds. We had quite a bit of discussion about that at our, uh, July, our regular July board meeting. Then, uh, we have some changes to our, uh, unified planning zoning ordinance here for the county. And, um, our third matter is the, um, uh, American Relief Fund, the, uh, COVID money, uh, ARP, we call it the American Relief Plan, Recovery Plan. So, uh, we have a preliminary budget to, to consider tonight. Vice Chairman Allen and I worked with Hal and Will to sort of put these numbers together and some, we've gotten some requests in writing. So those are three issues tonight. Um, there will be motions involved with each one, but, but it's other than the hospital, the others are, uh, well, the unified development ordinance will stay in effect till there's need for another change down the road. So, uh, but as far as spending the Recovery Act money, that will, um, there's another process to be involved in that. So we're going to get started and our first item tonight is consideration of the request of American Healthcare Systems LLC. As I said, we had considerable discussion on this issue at our July board meeting. And primarily that centered around a, a request from, uh, AHS for an advance or the first three million dollar advance on the twelve million dollar loan fund that the county has through, will have through the state of North Carolina. There was a little bit of heartburn over that, just to be candid about it relative to the quickness of it. Uh, it came just within three or four days of owner, new ownership, the ownership change at the hospital. At the time, we didn't have proper documentation to consider that. At the same time, there's been, if, if the public is not aware of this and, and the new buyers and everyone involved with this hospital situation as far as we're concerned over the last two and a half years, that we, we were intent on saving a hospital in Randolph County. And went through any number of, um, processes, changes, decisions by others to get there. So, um, we want to keep our hospital. We want to get it off to a good start. And we want to be able to, uh, provide healthcare services to the citizens. That's why we went through all those things. Adding to that, I will say, all of the documents that the county requested relative to the security, all the documents that our attorney, Nixon Pruitt, Kristi Maitt, that they requested in behalf of our security, all of those documents have been received. A promissory note, deed of trust, UCC agreements, all of those things have been properly signed and submitted to the county and have been filed. So we do have our security in this. Also, the, the new buyer, the new owners of the hospital, American Health Systems, has, uh, certified or notified in writing that they understand that this is just the first three million of the twelve million, that there will be a nine million dollar balance left, um, after this distribution. So it's not in addition to, it's a part of the plan. It's just that it came a little quicker than, than what we, uh, I guess, expected or were prepared for. So, but that is our first item tonight. We do, as I said, we do want the hospital proceeding. What we are hearing from the hospital that all available beds are full, uh, emergency room is full, uh, doing some surgeries, that, um, things are going very well. So, uh, that's our first item and I'm going to, uh, leave it with that and have comments from the board or however much other information you want. Will has been working on this. Will, you want to make any comments relative to security?
I'll just go over the, um, documentation that you referred to. There was an executed note and deed of trust on the property. There's UCC filings on the personal property. Uh, there's a post-closing agreement, which is just to clarify that we still want to get title insurance. When all is said and done, we still need the VMG study opinion. And there's a revised LLC agreement that specifies that there's two commissioners on their board members, since it's an LLC. And, uh, the Form W nine and the e-verify that was necessary to set them up as a vendor, all that's been taken care of.
And I guess it needs to be noted too, that the, uh, healthcare funds from the state, we don't have those yet because all those qualifications, so this is.
This is an advance from the general fund.
Anticipation of taking those funds coming in at some point, once the, um, procedure for drawing down those funds has been, uh, I guess identified.
Yep. The, the big item, thank you Dave, the big item in that is the revised opinion from VMG who wrote the feasibility study. And since the amount of the loan changed, the status of the cancer center changed, status of the ownership and Staywell changed, all of those things have changed since, um, the original feasibility study was done. So the LGC imposed that request and, and the Attorney General that, um, the loan would not come forward without the revised opinion based on those changes from VMG. So, and we've been told that that is a working process right now. Uh, so we hope to have that. And of course, we're advancing the funds, so when the twelve million is available, we'll take our three million back and put that back into fund balance. And we will have, Mr. Allen and I were talking prior to our meeting tonight, we're going to have, um, reports due. Of course, Dave and I will be on their board. Uh, we're going to have reports due. There won't be another advancement of money unless we're comfortable, confident that the hospital is proceeding and especially that the funds are being used for capital expenditures. We've been clear about that from, from day one, um, in this process and, um, we, we don't want to be involved or be responsible or be depended upon for the operation of the hospital. And our, our intent and well, well stated is that the funds be used for capital purchases. So, um, those are the issues that, that we've been addressing to get to this point. So.
I might also point out that, um, much was made with, um, before the twelve million dollar loan was approved about the hospital being operating as a for-profit as opposed to a nonprofit. And I noticed in reading, um, you know, some of the documents that, um, under their principal purpose, which is in section one five, near the very beginning, that it says they are committed to having a robust charity policy to treat patients in need of financial assistance. All hospitals shall have a financial assistant, assistance policy. And so I was encouraged to have that right up front, um, you know, in their documentation. So I felt good about that. I was encouraged. So we'll see.
Other comments?
I, I guess in AHS's defense too, there was some, uh, Mike Serian indicated there was some transfer of some funds. I think that they were planning to utilize, uh, fund operations out of one of the subsidiary or ancillary businesses. And so that, um, that I think necessitated the, the need for the advance. Uh, it was a significant dollar transfer. And I, I'll leave it at that.
Yes.
But, uh, uh, I think that's what drew the need.
Correct.
And it was very quick in doing that.
Also, and, and I, I don't, I don't think it's good, we, we don't want to dwell on our past. We're looking to the future. We're looking forward to better days and, and a more secure, dependable hospital here in the county and in Ashboro. But, and again, to AHS's defense slightly, they, they inherited some pretty serious problems at the hospital too, that needed immediate attention. And a, a lot of those are centered on equipment that's outdated, uh, some of it doesn't work, but, um, there was, there, there were issues that had to be addressed quickly. And Medicare and Medicaid dollars, and, and we have, we have a lot of patients in Randolph County who are on Medicare or Medicaid. Those dollars don't come at checkout. And they don't come in thirty days either. Sometimes they're, uh, several months away and there can be an adjustment to those dollars two years down the road. So, uh, those, those are issues that, that they have to deal with also. All right. Any other comments, questions, or I entertain a motion?
I'll, uh, I'll move the unauthorized events, advancement of three million dollars to American Health Systems LLC.
All right. Have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Further discussion or questions? All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no, and it is approved. Will is going to go transfer the money. All right. Our next item tonight is the American Relief Fund and Hal is, uh, probably quite a bit of documentation for us tonight to consider. And, um, as I said earlier, David and I worked with Will and Hal to sort of put some of these plans and, and I want to say, this is, this is, um, this is not etched in stone. Probably most of these are going to change over time. I do want to say, excuse me Hal, I just got back Monday night from our NACO conference in Maryland. And the, the focus of the whole conference was on the American Recovery Act funds and the use of those funds. And there were a lot of complaints about lack of flexibility in those funds, specifically or, or more routinely from rural counties who don't have some of the infrastructure and issues that, that municipalities have. And there were some, some pretty strong comments made that, you know, they had the money, but their hands were, their, their hands were tied as, as to what they could use it for. All of the comments were recorded and sent back to the Treasury. Through five o'clock tomorrow afternoon, you can write a letter to question, um, how the funds are being distributed. You can ask for flexibility, more flexibility in using those funds. That was all brought out. One of the workshops was, um, conducted by a couple of folks from the Treasury. Then those comments will be, uh, considered by the Treasury and a final report on the use of the funds will be available in sixty to ninety days, probably somewhere around October. So since, because as we consider these, there's still more rules and, and regulations or, or flexibilities or whatever to come. A lot of them are moving ahead. I was in one panel where there was a person from, um, an executive from, uh, Seattle, Washington. They got four hundred and fifty million dollars. There was another representative there from Houston, Texas. They got nine hundred million dollars. The municipalities, you're using a lot of the money for housing. But one of the workshops I went to is Counties and the American Rescue Plan. And it has, um, Nevada County, California, DeKalb County, Georgia, Miami County, Indiana. But on the back, it has Rowan County of North Carolina on this, uh, handout at the conference. And the reason, I mean, we all know Rowan County, but what's particularly eye-catching about this, when we are looked at groups of counties, we will always be put in a group with Rowan, Catawba, uh, Cabarrus. Their population's a hundred and forty-two thousand. We're a hundred and forty-five. We got twenty-eight million dollars. They got twenty-eight million dollars. So far, this is what Rowan County in North Carolina has done. They have approved seven million dollars. So they're not rushing out to go spend the money. Two million was in bonuses for county employees, one million for a chemical booster station. I don't know what that is. One million in reimbursements and expenses for tourism, and that's one of the big items on our list. And one million for stormwater improvements at the local school system. So that's what they have done with seven. So they got roughly fourteen like we did, get a half of it. So, um, and they've spent about half of that. So it is a working process. And Hal, I'm probably getting ahead of you as far as when we have to use it now. So I'm going to shut up and let you go ahead now. But I did want to report that the conference, that, that's what the whole thing was about, um, and using that money.
Darrell, tonight's meeting is really an opportunity for the commissioners to consider some very preliminary funding options and to establish the next step in the process that will be used for fund allocations. And I think it's important to, to point out, uh, particularly from what you've read, we're being very meticulous in, in the way we go about looking at allocations of these recovery funds. I'll touch on that a little bit later, but we want to be sure that these funds and their once, one-time funding that's, that's coming to Randolph County, total of twenty-eight, twenty-seven million, nine hundred and five thousand dollars. We already have the first allocation, which is thirteen million, nine hundred and fifty-two dollars. Uh, the second distribution is going to be expected no earlier than, uh, May of twenty twenty-two. So we wanted to put in place a process where we can really look at the, uh, ways to have long-term and lasting impact in Randolph County. And I think we're, we're going to be touching on several of those tonight with some recommendations. Now, as I said, this is just the beginning of the process. Uh, back in April, the chairman and the vice chairman hosted a meeting in Randolph County of all our mayors and all the managers of Randolph County. We got together at that meeting. We talked about issues, joint issues facing us, not necessarily as a municipality or a county government, but really facing us as a community, Randolph County community. And what, how we can use these once-in-a-lifetime funding that's coming from the federal government to make the biggest impact possible. Uh, after that meeting, uh, the chairman and the vice chairman met with myself and Will Massey and we, our finance officer, and we began to, to look at some broad areas, uh, to begin, uh, looking at the funding to see what kind of impact that they would have in, in Randolph County. And tonight, as I said, is just the beginning of that process. I'm going to go over some, some, uh, general, uh, requirements of the recovery funds. Uh, the Treasury Department is, has already issued preliminary guidance. They're going to firm that up over the next few months, but we, we think what we're proposing, the areas that we're looking at are totally consistent with, with what the guidelines show. The key word is recovery from the pandemic and monies from the recovery funds, for the most part, need to be used in areas that have been impacted by the coronavirus and by the, uh, uh, COVID. And, and that's what they're designed for. The, the law that sets up the recovery funds mentions some specific areas that the funding can be allocated. Uh, public health, negative economic impacts that had been experienced as a result of the pandemic, as a result of the COVID, services in a community that were disproportionately impacted by the pandemic. Monies can be used to provide assistance there. Infrastructure and infrastructure is water and sewer lines. The revenue loss, if a public, uh, sector, uh, agency, whether it be a government or one of our, uh, agencies had revenue loss, that is a public agency, uh, this funding can be looked at to provide assistance to them and also administrative, uh, costs and, and following through with all the paperwork that's going to be required on this project. And, and I, I will say before I move on, the administration of the recovery funds is going to be critical between now and twenty twenty-six. That's the, when the funding will, will end. Because the county government has to, is responsible for that and, and the mechanism that we put in place to monitor how that money is spent over time, we'll be accountable for that. So we can't underestimate the administrative costs to the county moving forward. We want to prepare for that. I'm going to, I'm going to start very briefly and I'm going to go over the general guidelines, uh, like what I just read, to support public health response. The recovery fund, recovery funds and, and the COVID nineteen mitigation efforts can be used for medical expenses, behavioral healthcare and certain other public health and safety staff needs. That's a very, uh, brief outline of what, what that allows us to use the money for. We have, uh, we have already received some requests and some, and, and I want to say again, when you're looking at these numbers moving forward and, and for, for the commissioners and for the public and, and those that are, that are watching on YouTube, these are in some instances what we call placeholder numbers. They're there because we know eventually we want to provide some funding, but that number hasn't always been, uh, determined as, as of tonight. And at the conclusion, we'll talk of what we'll do from, uh, after tonight. But some possible programs to address the public health response. There are some facility renovations that our public health department needs, uh, at their facility to, uh, better allow them to prepare for a pandemic in the future and meet their current requirements as a public health department. We're working, uh, with Tyra Aker, the new health director and the public health staff to come up with, who will ultimately meet with the board on that, to come up with some specific, uh, numbers and, uh, that they need for facility renovations. Uh, certainly inmate testing and vaccinations, that's an ongoing issue in the counties. The county government's responsibility. We have money that we set aside for that. Also, your personal protective equipment, there's always the need for that that we'll have to maintain. We have certain temporary employees that are currently working as a result of the pandemic. We have monies to, uh, out of the recovery funds to pay for those employees. Deep River Trail Development, a million dollars. That is what, we're putting that under public health. It could, it could fall in under several different categories. Economic development enhancement is one of those. Tourism is another role that it can fall under, but we put it under public health response because of the need for people to have outdoor activities and the opportunity to do that. Address negative economic impacts caused by the coronavirus. That's, that's one of the main guidelines of the legislation. That means to respond to economic harms to workers, families, small businesses, impacted industries and the public sector. Negative economic impacts, we've originally allocated, and again, this is preliminary, one point five million dollars. We're looking at ultimately the Tourism Authority. I want to say this before I get to some other areas. We are allocating substantial funds to the Tourism Development Authority. Number one, so that they can reach out to the other chambers of commerce in Randolph County and the other programs that they were providing support for and had not been able to do that and pick up that support, uh, throughout our county. So although this money would go to them, it will also be used by all our, uh, communities and, and organizations that had been supported. The total to go into Tourism Development Authority is, is a million dollars. The remainder of this money, uh, that totals a million dollars, we, we place that just because the recovery funds allow us to do that for revenue replacement for the Tourism Authority of the revenue that they lost as a result of the COVID. So that was another three hundred and some thousand dollars, which is, equals the million dollars that the board had previously talked about. The historic Lux Cannery down in Seagrove, uh, half a million dollars. The, that is a, and I know several of the board. The, that is a, and I know several of the board members have been there. We've had presentations made. The Seagrove Pottery Community has had a, has suffered, like so many others, as a result of the pandemic. And this Lux Canary will be a convention center for their people. It will be a, where the potters can come and sell their wares. It, it will hopefully be an economic development stimulant, stimulant for that area. The Business Gem Portal, that is a, is sponsored by the Ashmore Randolph Chamber of Commerce, working with Randolph Community College and their Small Business Division. And what that will, will do, and, and I'm, I'm just not going into all the details on all this, but what that will do is, and it is free. It will be made available to all the chambers of commerce in Randolph County, to all the businesses, particularly the small businesses. And it's a way for them, the, I think they came up with the name Gem, to show them how to recover from the effects of the pandemic and try to get their small businesses back to the levels that they once were. The Liberty Museum is, is, we have that under economic impact for the town of Liberty. And the Cooperative Extension, and Kenny Sharon is here tonight with some of his staff, and I appreciate that too. I, I'm excited about what, what Cooperative Extension is, is working on to address, create a digital alliance in Randolph County. That's to address some of the issues that were identified during the pandemic. Our, our citizenry and our, our children not being able to use the computer technology that they have. That's a very simple way of explaining what that is, but that's going to be a, a program that, that I think the state's going to use as a model moving forward. We want to look at food resiliency and food resiliency initiatives in Randolph County. And again, that's going to fall on our Cooperative Extension Service. We're beginning to see the role of Cooperative Extension become even more enhanced as a result of the impacts of the COVID pandemic in Randolph County. So, so these are some areas that we want to address in detail. Services to disproportionately impacted communities. Yes, ma'am?
I'm sorry. You were talking about the, um, the Historic Lux Canary. And I just thought it might be a good time to point out to anybody that might be listening that because all these funds are dispersed because, um, based on your population, and the population of Seagrove is so small that they got the smallest amount of any of our municipalities in Randolph County. They got seventy thousand dollars. So if you think, you know, Staley, Staley got a hundred and twenty thousand because their, you know, because their population is larger than Seagrove's. So I just thought I would point that out.
Right. Thank you, Commissioner. The services to disproportionately impacted communities, that's one of the, the areas that the, the national law allows the counties to, to look at with these recovery funds. And what that means, means a lot of different things, but one of those is rent and utility and mortgage delinquency that could result in homelessness. Result in homelessness, homelessness due to the COVID impacts. And that word homelessness is a key to all that as a result of the COVID impacts. We're going to be turning, looking more to our Department of Social Services and Tracy Murphy is here tonight, and I appreciate that very much. Not as the agency that manages the details of, of a program like this, but they would be the agency that would, as an umbrella agency, that could, could work with some of our nonprofit agencies in the county as, as we address this issue on a countywide basis. So the role of the Department of Social Services will continue to, to be critical in this as they provide oversight to, uh, rent and utility and, and mortgage delinquency as we try to avoid homelessness due, due to the COVID impacts. The, um...
Can I ask one?
Yes, sir. And, and please, please do. I, I don't, yes.
In other words, you, you would be looking for them to be the, kind of the front line of getting you information about homelessness and those kind of things.
They would be the, the frontline that we would give the money to for them to work in areas that they, with nonprofits, or whoever, which way they, they felt would be appropriate to address this issue. The, uh, others, uh, services to disproportionately impacted communities. Habitat for Humanity is a good example of, of revenues, private revenues that were devastated as a result of the coronavirus. Our Partnership for Children, uh, and, and again, these figures that you see there are what we call placeholder figures right now. Because we'll get more detailed information later. Partnership for Children and the Family Crisis Center. And then we have, after taking care of those, we would have additional money for other COVID impact programs based on the way we, we have that put out. Water and sewer infrastructure. Make necessary investments to improve access to clean drinking water and invest in wastewater and stormwater infrastructure. These are transformational opportunities that we're talking about in Randolph County. And it begins with the Seagrove Ula Water District. And they have submitted already, and, and several, I know commissioners have visited their facilities, and they have, have done considerable engineering work to expand their wastewater treatment plant to be able to provide water and sewer lines up to Interstate 73. It would be absolutely transformational for that area to have water and sewer. As we move forward, it would be a big, uh, area that we could improve our economy because we would have that. We also want to look at Highway 311, and we have a, some programs already going up there. But we've, we've allocated, remember, we want to look at not just specific projects, but we want to look at the county as a whole. And if we focused up at the 311 area, it would be a wonderful opportunity to connect Archdale and Rannelman and Ashboro into that area with these funds and water and sewer lines. Again, it's this preliminary at this time. Matching grants, we, we need to have reserve funds so that when a municipality, that we might participate with them on, on some of their projects with matching grants on infrastructure. And we still have future infrastructure, uh, project money that would be available from, from this initial allocation. Keeping in mind now, these are holding numbers to show the areas that we want to look at. The numbers themselves may change as we move forward. Replace public sector revenue laws, that's what I was talking about with the Tourism Authority. Their occupancy tax was down about three hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars, and we would be able to replace that, which makes the total allotment go into Tourism Authority of a million dollars for them to use as they need to. Administrative, uh, the, uh, again, a program like this with so many different programs and the money coming from the county, we need to be planning for how we, as an administration with the county can take care of that as we move forward. Okay, the timeline, where are we right now and where are we going to be going? The first thing that we need to do is, is what I've just gone over, and, and let me stop there before I, we go to the next point. Are, are there any comments or questions the board would like to make?
I, I know broadband has been a big issue. You might, would just want to touch on why that's kind of out of our jurisdiction, I guess, at this point.
Yes. Thank you, Commissioner Allen. And broadband is a, a, a big issue. And counties are prohibited by the state from using money to put broadband, broadband infrastructure in. But the beauty of what Kenny Sharon is developing through Cooperative Extension allows us to deal with the broadband issue that we have through education, through education, educational programs that will be put in through Cooperative Extension. And it will allow not just the children, but also the adults a better understanding of, of how to manage a technical world that they live in.
We're just not allowed to put wires in the ground or anything like that?
No, cannot do that.
Yeah, so hopefully the state will look at that.
Yes. Okay. The, uh, where, where, where do we go from tonight? Okay, that, I have never seen funds, and Will Massey's just the same way with all his experience. I've never seen a program that's potentially more complicated for the use of money than these American Recovery Funds that are coming to our local governments. The requirements on local government, how we keep up with that is, is very difficult. But number two, it's incumbent upon us as the county government to make sure that when we're getting applications from many, from these agencies and, and areas that I just went over, that they are making sure that the programs that they're asking for funding for meet the guidelines of the American Rescue Funds. Our finance officers put together an excellent application that would allow us to meet those federal Department of Treasury guidelines. And what we want to do after tonight's meeting with, if the board, with your blessings, is to set up a, a training session with the agencies that are interested in applying for the funds that, that I have gone over tonight. And what this would be is we would get together as a, as a group, and we'd talk about the application process and what they, how they need to focus, the programs that they're going to be recommending to you and, and how they show that it was related to COVID. I would, I would hope we, we can set that up in the next week or two. We, we'll make that contact as, as soon as possible. By mid August, we hope we would have all the formal applications from all these different groups. I have some information that I've, I've gone over with you tonight. Some we don't have specific information at this time, so we hope we would have that at the middle of August. I would be recommending that the board set a special meeting up in August. August the 30th is the date. That, that's at the board's discretion certainly. And at that meeting, the applicants for the recovery funds could come to the board and talk to you in, more in detail about what their request is and the impact those funds would have on it. And then what we, your staff would do in that meantime, from July to, to August, we would look at the request and try to put, put the, those numbers together in a way that, with what we already have, the thirteen point nine million. So, uh, we would be hopeful that by September, contracts could be developed and signed for the use of these funds and that, that money could be available. We're confident, okay, we're, we're confident, we're confident with that process that we're going to meet all the federal guidelines, uh, moving forward, yes.
Okay. No, I just wanted to clarify for those that are in the audience and those that may be listening online. So this application that has been devised by the county for these funds is, will not be available until after this training session.
We, we will give them the application before the training session, and then we'll sit down with them at the training session and make sure they know how to fill it out.
Okay, so how do they get this application? Do they call the county office? Is it on the website?
Right now, yeah, good question. Right now, they can call the finance office and, and we will provide them the application. So there's, the next step is actually to set that meeting for August the 30th. We recommend at 5:00 PM, so we'd have plenty of time to hear presentations. We'd probably put a time limit on presentations. You know, people ought to be able to make a presentation in ten or fifteen minutes, so it wouldn't, uh, one, one request wouldn't dominate the whole night. And then the final thing is the federal recovery funds require that the Board of Commissioners, you have a, uh, make a resolution to, or not a resolution, a motion to accept the full twenty-seven point nine, twenty-seven million nine hundred and five thousand six hundred and thirty-one dollars. That's the total funding from the state and the local fiscal recovery funds. And we designate Assistant Manager Finance Officer Will Massey as the authorized representative to take all the actions necessary on behalf of the county to receive, report, and administer the funding. Of course, that's what we do as a matter of course anyway, but the recovery funds require that the board have a motion saying that that's the way we're going to do that. So, Mr. Chairman, that's, that's where we are right now. We, we certainly got a wonderful opportunity ahead of us and a lot of work ahead of us also.
All right. Any other questions or comments? We've sort of had some discussion here as we've gone along. There is a motion, um, that is, uh, that is printed here to, to start this process officially.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I would say that the state's getting billions of dollars.
Yeah.
And I know some of our representatives and Senate, uh, representatives have applied for some funds. I know Kenny Sharon with Ag Extension has provided some information to support some of their requests. So, um, a, a, a portion of this, I think, if we can somehow utilize these funds in conjunction with what state's going to be doing, like things on broadband, just like we would do, partner with our municipalities. So, and the second point I'd like to make is, you know, that there's no, with the CARES Act funding, there was a immediate need and a pretty quick spend time that we had to go through. This is, uh, what has to be encumbered by December of 2024.
Twenty-four.
And then spent by December 2026.
That's right.
So there's, there's not a huge rush. I, I know when the chairman and I sat down with you and, and Will, um, you know, there's twenty-seven, twenty-eight million dollars out there, and we've still got thirteen. And, and those numbers were just something to hang out there, to kind of put as placeholders. So, um, I, I've heard on, on some of the information of Web, uh, WebEx and online is there's no need to be in a hurry with this.
Right.
We need to be deliberate with it, and we've got time to spend it.
Absolutely.
I know that, uh, Rowan County has definitely already gone and spent a, a significant portion of their funds, but I, I've, I've heard just kind of restraint and, and especially waiting on what the state's going to do and what funding that might come to Randolph County for that. And based on how they are in Raleigh, I don't know when we might know that, you know, as far as budgets and those kinds of things. So, uh, those are kind of two things I'd just like to point out. And I, I would like to say Will and Hal have done a good job, um, kind of delineating the information and setting up a format to, uh, based on the Treasury regulations to try to categorize these sources of, the uses of these funds that make it easy to, because if, if we don't spend it correctly, we, we get to pay it back.
Right.
We'd have to pay it ourselves or do away with it. One of the things that's brought out about broadband also, not, it's not all about availability or access. It's about when the pandemic hit and you had two adults working from home and children studying from home, they didn't have adequate service to do both.
That's right.
So they had broadband, but they had to take turns. They couldn't all be working at, at the same time. But it's been mentioned, that's, I think the state and the federal is going to be dealing with the broadband issue. And what we need, and I think Kenny's involved in that process, is identifying where our holes are.
Yes. And, and I, I just want to say, because Kenny Sharon's here tonight with Cooperative Extension, the program he's talking about is, is, is a local program that's being designed here in Randolph County. I think the, the state actually wants to take a look at that, um, for a statewide program too. So we're in a leadership role on that.
Okay, any other comments or I have a motion?
I'll, I'll, I'll make a motion pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 168-17.1 to accept the twenty-seven million nine hundred and five thousand six hundred and thirty-one dollars funding from the COVID State and Local Fiscal Recovery Act funds of the H.R. 1319 American Rescue Plan Act of 2021 and designate the Assistant County Assistant County Manager Finance Officer as authorized representative to take actions necessary on behalf of the county to receive, report, and administer the funding.
You have a second?
A second.
Thank you. Further discussion or questions? If we hadn't passed this motion, we have to send that money back.
If we do what?
If we, if we hadn't passed this motion, we're going to send that money back.
It's a good question. Just pass the motion. We don't want to find out.
All right. Those who favor the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no, and it's approved. Thank you.
Now, do we need a motion to set a meeting on the 30th or we're just going to set it?
You can just do it consensus.
Will, they'll bring that at our August meeting if we need to.
Can the people from the, do you hear on the 30th of August?
Yeah.
Can you all make it back on the 30th of August?
Yeah. 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 Okay. Yeah. All right. Our third and final item on our agenda tonight is the Unified Development Ordinance. Jay, you want to come and present and tell us what you've been doing to get us to this point?
Chairman, members of the board, good evening. Um, on, uh, July 11th, 2019, Governor Cooper signed into law Senate Bill 355, which we've all come to know now as, uh, General Statute 160D, which has been the bane of, uh, pretty much every planning department in, in the state since then. Um, it, but, you know, after looking at it for a while, it, it actually turned out to be a, a pretty good thing and, 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 you know, once again, we were ahead of the curve on a, a lot of it. We didn't have to really make a lot of changes that some other counties did. Basically, what it does is it takes, um, GS 153A and 160A, which were the, um, old statutes that gave authority to counties and cities respectively to, you know, have zoning, and combine them into one document, uh, that was supposed to be simpler. Um, it's 14 articles, they're fairly well laid out, I, I think. Um, you know, Ben's probably looked at it as, as much as I have and, you know, had moments of what and, and other times where it's like, well, that makes sense. Things that, that right away we saw were going to be different is they did away with, uh, for, for planning departments, the idea of conditional use zoning. It was their legislature's determination that evidently it was confusing. A lot of times it's confused with special use, and they decided that what the correct verbiage should be is a conditional district zoning, which we've been doing for about 10 years now, so I thought right away, aha, there is one thing I don't really have to mull over, though, um, some of the mechanics of how that work are, are interesting now. For instance, um, if any conditions on, on a conditional district zoning now have to be submitted in writing before the board can vote on it. And, uh, you know, I thought, well, that seems reasonable enough until you had that realization of, well, a, a lot of times things come up in public hearing where, you know, a, a applicant hears something and realizes maybe they need to add a condition or drop one, you know? For instance, well, yeah, sure, I'd put a row of trees on the west side, uh, you know, to satisfy Mr. Smith. And we thought, well, what, what do we do in that instance? Because the verbiage seemed to indicate it, it might be something that we can't. So we contacted the Institute of Government more than once and they explained that, well, um, yeah, that is something that would have to be in, in the, uh, application before the, the board voted on it. So, we asked, how about if we had a printer at the time of the meeting and actually changed the application in real time to reflect the change in the, uh, conditions, since we can't like do it the next day? And they said, well, yeah, that'll be fine. We'll work the mechanics of that out, but there is a way. I just thought that was sort of interesting. Um, the other things that changed were, um, uh, they, they set a, a time limit on certain things. For instance, once you get rezoned, if you don't do anything within a 12-month period, it goes back to RA or whatever the original zoning was. Um, they stated that, uh, you have to have made some, uh, substantial changes on it for, for that to, you know, be okay. Now, they didn't define that. That's, that's up to the department to decide if somebody's done enough that they don't lose their, their zoning, or at least that's what I can tell at, at this, this, um, this point. They also prohibited, um, third-party downzonings. Uh, once again, this is something that Randolph County's never really had any issues with. I mean, we, we require a, a letter from the property owner on any rezoning to, you know, make sure they're happy with it before we move forward, but they, they've prohibited it. It's no longer anything that, that you can do. Uh, a special use still basically works, as best I can tell, like special uses have worked, so that, that won't really change for us. That, I'm sure there's some things in the mechanics of how they'll vote and we'll word things that'll be a little different, but in, in, in the overall, uh, it, it seems to be fairly simple. They also mandated that you have to have a comprehensive plan if you're going to continue to have countywide zoning or, or municipal zoning. Uh, once again, we're fine. We've, we've had a, a growth management plan for some time now, so that's another thing I don't have to come up with, but there are some counties in the state that as of next year will have to have one. Uh, so once again, one more thing, we were, we were ahead of the curve on. Variances, uh, they, they did address those somewhat. They, um, um, put into effect what they called reasonable accommodation, uh, to allow variances. And, and, and example of this is, um, several months ago, we had Mr. Bill Redding come in. Uh, he and his wife are in declining health and he needed to add a bathroom. Uh, but the bathroom that was going to be added would go into his side setbacks. Technically, that's really not a, a variant situation as, as the law goes. It's like, well, that's too bad, but you still have to meet your setbacks. Now, make no mistake, the Planning Board used common sense and, you know, reasonableness and, and they approved that right on, especially being that we had a letter from the adjoining property owner saying we have no problem with that. But, uh, the, the current ordinance will now state that, you know, for cases like that, uh, and they state some verbiage from the Fair Housing Act, I believe, that that sort of thing will be perfectly permissible. There's a uniform time now for asking for relief from the appeal of a zoning official. Uh, before, I think that was something that was sort of up to individual departments. It's 30 days now. We, and there are a few other things where they've set mandates on time. Uh, I also understand, though, I, I don't really expect to see this happen much, that if they appeal the finding of a zoning official, as it, as it currently exists, they, they go to the Board of Adjustment and, you know, they either say that the, the department raised the right call or the wrong one, and then if they disagree with that, then they can go to court. As I read it, now they can just go to court. I don't see anybody doing that, being that, you know, the Board of Adjustment is free and court's not. I'm sure, take my chances there first, but that, that verbiage, um, is, is there now. They did spend a lot of time on, um, conflicts of interest. They did a very good job of defining what a family member is now. You, you know, it's, uh, uh, it's laid out specifically what the relation has to be to you before you have a conflict of interest. They stated, you know, certain business associates and things, you should recuse yourself. Uh, but then they followed it up with something called associational relationships. I'm not exactly sure what that is. It's not defined. I don't know if that means if you're in rotary with somebody, you know, you, you should, you know, sit back and not vote. I don't know. They didn't define it. Uh, this is one of those things, I guess we'll find out in the coming months, uh, through various and sort of, sort of legal actions, how, how that, how that applies. They've created definitions for, uh, a care home. This is something that comes up once and again, um, where you have a situation where, let's say you have an elderly parent, uh, they're unable to take care of themselves, uh, they just need a modicum of care though, and you know, you think, well, if I could set them up in, on my land in, in a facility, then I could take care of them until such time as I can. Uh, we've always been pretty flexible with that, but the state has now laid out guidelines for that, you, you know, where you have to allow it, but, uh, the person putting the facility in also has to meet certain guidelines. It has to meet a certain building standard. I think you also have to have documentation from a physician saying, yes, this person needs care. And ultimately, there's verbiage that says it needs to be removed afterwards if it's normally within violation of, of the, uh, you know, property there. It's, um, it's one of those things that, like I said, it doesn't come up a lot, but, but, but once in a great while. Um, another thing that, that they put in that, uh, is, uh, has been good for us, that, that we've had a lot of talk about recently, uh, was 160D 83 states that before subdivision can go to the board, you have to go send it to the DOT for an opinion, uh, on the road accesses, et cetera, uh, as well as the Director of the Health Department. I guess they would address any sort of sewage water issues that, that could, could be out The, another thing that you see a lot of is they, they put into the verbiage at any of these meetings, who has standing to speak at any particular issue, particularly if it's like a quasi judicial thing. Um, they're not saying that they can't speak necessarily, but you, you know, it sort of limits what their testimony should be in, in a case, you know, if you live five miles away from a situation, maybe you really don't need to, um, throw your two cents worth in if it's, if it's nothing that really affects you.
Can I ask, how would you handle that then, Jay?
I'd let them, it, it's interesting. The, um, the, the verbiage says that really, unable to enact that, you have to have procedures adopted within the boards themselves for how they're going to handle it. The bottom line is that's kind of up to you. If you want to let them go ahead and talk, you can. I mean, it's, it's kind of up to this board to, and, and the planning board to decide who they think has standing, as I understand it. So, and they, they mandate these things, but they also built in a lot of flexibility when you get to looking at it. It, like I said, when I first looked at it, I thought some of this seemed a little draconian and after reading it for a while, it's like, well, you know, it's actually common sense.
Okay, so let's rewind for just.
Yes, ma'am.
Go back just a little ways because we just had this situation.
Yes, ma'am.
A few months ago. So now, if there's a request for subdivision, it goes to NC DOT and to the Department of Health first?
Yes, ma'am, and I have to have a written opinion from them on the subdivision request before I can even proceed with it and put it in front of the, uh, Planning Board for approval.
Now, is that, is that our rule or is that the state, is that a state rule?
That's the state rule. It's, uh, 160D 83. They, they mandated it in the, uh, in the new, uh, General Statute, so the developers have to.
And if a DOT says what? They don't like it or they don't think it's acceptable or it'd be changed or, or what?
Um, once again, that flexibility, they mandated that you have to have that opinion, but it's just that, it's, it's an opinion, so it'd be up to the, uh, the boards to decide, you know, whether they're going to agree with the DOT's assessment or, or not. But you have to have it before you can move forward.
Let's, let's take the, the one over on Flin Hill Road, 1004.
Yes, sir.
That was recently turned down and DOT would not approve 18 driveways.
Right.
Would that have basically ended that whole process before it ever got to the Planning Board?
It very well could have. Um, it would have been up to, I guess, the Planning Board to decide if they, if they wanted to, to go with that recommendation, but, um...
That's what's, that's what's still confusing. Uh, it still lea- it still leaves, uh, le- leaves it open for overriding the, the state requirement.
Well...
What's the use of having it?
I'll assume that the DOT also has to honor this. They understand that their, their power is to make a recommendation, but they can't kill the project. At least, that's what it looks like as far as what I see here.
So we would approve it over DOT's objections?
Yes, sir.
I mean, we could.
Yes, sir.
But if we did that, DOT could still deny access to the road.
It's a funny thing. Our local, um, director said that they could do that, but as we worked our way up the ladder, and I know you spoke to some of the same people, when I spoke to Ruben, he explained, no, they can't do that, they've never done that and they wouldn't do that. The only exception is, uh, businesses. Um, they, they can, they can turn down access to a, a business location, but he, he explained that for residential ones, they, they've not done that, so...
Well, I mean, I, I don't, well...
And it differs from county to county. You can call Davidson County, because I did, and, you know, their planning director told me they absolutely have the authority to do it, but my uncle was, uh, one of those guys for many years and he told me that, uh, it varies from county to county as to who does what.
Davidson had the authority to do what?
Davidson's planning director told me that there, the DOT can absolutely kill a project. If the DOT calls and tells him, look, we're not going to approve those driveways for that development, it's over.
Case closed.
It's just over.
Jay, can I back up a little bit? Did I give you some information?
Sure.
We recently had a subdivision plat-
Come on our way up to the mic.
We recently had a subdivision plat submitted and the first thing I did, I sent it straight to DOT. DOT was okay with it preliminary, but then they said, we want some of these driveways moved, we want some of this thing, these things and that thing. And that's what DOT has been giving us here recently, is we're wanting these changes made. But like Jay said, our local DOT says they don't have the authority to tell them, you have to do this. They recommend it to these developers, that they move these access points to make it more safe for the citizens and the traveling public, is what I have seen and what they've given us.
Is that speci- is that basically, I guess is the right word, basically what would be in that opinion letter from DOT?
It would. They would lay out, yes. They'd recommend, you know, 14 driveways versus 20 or whatever their issue is with it.
But if they said, this driveway needs to move over and this one needs to be done, aren't those conditions? And you say we're doing away with conditional use zoning?
That, that's, it's not exactly a condition of the permit. It would, it would go to, I mean, this is, this is a change that would have to be made on the site plan before the board even looks at it and passes any conditions. Um, and, y- you know, we, it, it's a, it's a little tricky in that, you know, I have to find, I have to get this, I don't know how you get it in front of the board that the DOT has recommended this before you actually put it there. Do you know what I'm, 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 I'm starting to befuddle myself. It's confusing. Um, if, if the DOT makes a recommendation, I mean, it's, it's up to the board to decide whether or not to take that recommendation, but I don't guess that the developer is under any obligation to make the changes before we go there. Obviously, the developer will be aware of it and he can take the DOT's recommendations or not, but, you know...
I think, I think what I would envision, we would see is a situation similar to when, um, our board adds a condition and we ask the applicant if, if they can accept that. So what I would envision is that DOT is going to make a recommendation and then the applicant can decide whether or not to amend their application to reflect those proposed, proposals, or they can elect to move forward without it. And they're either, they're going to come to our Planning Board and say, all right, you know, I have amended my application to reflect the proposed suggest- or the suggestions from DOT. That's what's before you, or they can say, I'm totally ignoring those.
Which he, he can because...
They can, they can, they can come that way.
And we can impose conditions. We're not going to have conditional use zoning.
Well, you'll, you'll just vote it up and, up or down?
Y- yeah, and you can, well, as I said earlier, we, we have a conditional district zoning now where, you know, the, the board or people in the audience may say, look, you know, if this thing had less driveways, we, we would be happy with it and he, he could agree to it and we could change the application there. It would be a little difficult because we're looking at a site plan, but we could try and get the verbiage right.
He agrees to it, so it doesn't become a condition. If he refuses, then you're going to vote it up or down.
There you go. That's exactly what would happen.
We're just not coming with this.
But that's what it is. It looks like a duck and it walks like a duck and it quacks like a duck. It's a duck.
If it comes out of Raleigh, it could be anything. But, yeah, I understand. It, it's, some of it's been confusing for me too. There's a lot of catch 22 that'll have to be worked out in time.
So what's the Health Department oversight or opinion or what? Does that work the same way?
Same way. We have to have a written opinion from them on, on their thoughts on, on the subdivision.
Is that going to have to do with septic systems?
That would, that would be what I would think their, their purview would be, yes. Septic system, soil quality in the area, something like that. Possibly if they have a history of water shortages in the area, that comes up once and again, um, you know, versus how many wells are going in. you know, versus how many wells are going in. I, I would imagine that would be what they would address. Once again, it doesn't say what they have to address. It just says they have to address it.
I was hoping that this would cut some of the ambiguity out of what we do, and it's, it's either right or it's wrong.
It's, it's cleared a few things and some other things. It, it muddied them up. It's, but I, I, like you, I kind of hoped for that too. At least they did say that it does have to go to the DOT. I mean, before that, before this, it was up in there whether, you know, that was necessary or not. We thought it was, but-
But they issued driveway permits.
Right. But that is, that is the, how it is written, and, and like you say, it's not got a lot of teeth, but, but there it is.
But this ordinance does not eliminate the need for driveway permits, right?
Not to my knowledge. It certainly doesn't state anything to that effect. The only other changes that we made were to the layout of the ordinance itself. We had to include some definitions that they, they required. Y'all probably looked at it and realized the definition section is about as thick as the old ordinance. We also changed some of the procedural verbiage in there to reflect what they, they wanted us to do. We also took the opportunity to fix some things that appeared to be typos. Like we had some zonings that didn't appear to have any setbacks at all in the ordinance, and then we dug and found older ordinances, and it's like, well, there they are, and you know, we corrected that. It was evidently just some sort of typo, or things that used to be in the table of permitted uses that somehow didn't get printed on the, the last go around. We made sure to correct those as best we could. This was all approved, as, as, as the board knows, on June eighth by the planning board. They decided that since our options were, we either follow the state mandate or do away with countywide zoning, that they would just, you know, pass what's mandated anyway, and, and recommended that to you. I, I hope you'll pass it too. I like working for the planning department. As long as we have countywide zoning, I have a job. So, I'm, I'm, that is pretty much an overview of, of, of 160D as, as we understand it.
Hey, so I have one other question. There was something in the email about required road frontage going from a hundred to a hundred and fifty feet. Is that part of this, or is that outside of this?
We looked at that, and in the end, they, they left it just like it is currently. One of the planning board members thought, well, if we had more road frontage, maybe it would cut down on lots and driveways. And then after much debate, they decided, well, you know what, let's just leave it like it is.
I have a question on page four. About three paragraphs from the bottom. It has to do with ETJ.
Yes sir.
Now, part of this looks like, it says, in essence, it states that a municipality cannot its ETJ. Cannot what? I think there's a word missing. And then if I'm reading this right, a municipality may extend their ETJ beyond one mile without the approval of the Board of County Commissioners.
Tim, do you want to address that?
What page were you referencing again?
Page four. The third paragraph up from the bottom. Says page four of seventeen. That's what we're looking at. Okay.
Section two oh two.
That's the-
Section two oh two.
That's in the memo, correct? Okay, that makes sense.
But cannot, that, whatever that word is that's missing is critical to that statement. It's right in the middle of the paragraph.
I think the word is extend.
Okay.
Dana, was that not the word that I called you about?
Yep, that was.
The word is extend.
Extend, yes.
It states that-
I mean, municipality cannot extend its ETJ into any area where the county is exercising zoning and subdivision regulations. Then it says, this section goes on to say that municipalities may extend their ETJ beyond one mile without the approval of the Board of County Commissioners. That doesn't say if there's, if the county has zoning in place.
Right. It's my understanding, if I remember correctly, the section of the, of the 160D that says that a camp, that the, if the county is enforcing the zoning and subdivision regulations in a particular area, then the city cannot just arbitrarily go out there and say, we're going to move our ETJ line here, because the county's already got it established.
But would that, would that prevent them from coming and asking us for permission to do that? Or is this-
They would have to come and ask for permission to move their ETJ.
We could still override this?
Yes. What this is saying, if I remember correctly, that if, since the county does have subdivision and, what was the other thing here? Subdiv-, zoning and subdivision regulations, the cities can't just extend their ETJ just because they want to, because we already have that. If we didn't have that, they could just extend it all they wanted to.
But we, but we, we, we could still allow them to do that?
Right.
They come and ask, yes.
They have to come and ask. Then that, if, if it's approved, then that starts a sixty day process. They have sixty days, it's in the ordinance and in 160D, to hold their public hearings and get all their zoning stuff set into place, but it doesn't actually transfer over until they either adopt the zoning or that sixty day time period runs out.
But that last sentence doesn't apply to us, because we do have zoning, exercising it everywhere that's outside-
Yeah.
All the other municipalities.
But we, we could still-
But we could give it anytime, if it came forward and passed, if you choose to do so.
But in Ashborough's case, they gave it all back to us.
Pretty much, yes.
And there are provisions in the ordinance now that, that address that. What happens if they give it back? There are also provisions in the ordinance that if there's a property split by county zoning and city zoning, what are we going to do? Well, the applicant has to go to the city and to the county and make a decision on who they want to follow under.
They're going to pick one.
Exactly. And then that, both governing boards have to adopt a resolution that has to be recorded with the registered deeds office within fourteen days.
It's treated the same way that they deal with it at the Board of Elections.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, that's-
Sleep or you choose.
That's always, that, that's been in place.
Okay.
Is that right? They had, they can pick whichever jurisdiction they want, whichever rules they want to abide by?
Previously, it was just kind of a, we'll handle it in the office type of thing, but the state has now said it's got to go through the formal adoption process by the governing bodies. So it takes, it takes the staff out of it, at the level of the, of the elected officials to make that decision whether or not to release it.
I think the last one of these we have is on Gold Hill Road, and we zoned one half, and the city's on the other half. It was for a solar farm.
That was the procedure at the time. Now the procedure was they would have to come and determine which one they wanted to be, which one they wanted to fall under.
Any other questions, observations? I don't know that this makes any of our jobs any easier.
I started to say, I don't, I don't think it clarifies a lot.
It hadn't started out that way. Maybe, maybe I'm just picking two or three things here, but-
If, if I could comment on that briefly, I mean, I, I recognize the desire for it to make things less complicated. I, I, I think zoning in and of itself, it's challenging to make that simple. This is going to make some people's jobs easier. It's not going to make your jobs easier. Previously, we had, you know, one set of rules for municipalities, one set of rules for counties. You have cases that are decided, and one of the first things that you have to do is to determine, you know, which set of rules you're following. And so from that standpoint, it will make things a little bit easier. It'll make things easier for attorneys that practice land use law. It'll make the cases that are decided in the future hopefully easier. So from that standpoint, I think in the long term, it will make things somewhat easier, but it doesn't really change your process, so.
The, the one question I have, guys, is when all, some of this stuff started coming out, it looked like to me this is almost like, oh my goodness, we've got to put another step in there for the, the DOT to be ruling on what we're going to do. What I'm hearing you say today is, we're asking for an opinion from them, but that's not going to dictate what you're going to do.
Correct.
They have no veto power.
They have no veto power, as I understand it, right. They, they, they get, they're required to give us an opinion. We're required to get that opinion, but it doesn't kill the project if they decide they don't like the subdivision.
We did ask them to show us the general statute that gave them the authority to kill a project, and they couldn't find it.
There's no general statute.
And this, this is a, this is probably, this is a question for attorney Ben, but let's say, we said to heck, we're going, we're going to let those folks put in eighteen driveways, wherever they want to put them, because it sounds like we're saying DOT cannot overrule us. Now, somebody backs out of the driveway and a car hits them, somebody gets killed, and we allowed that. Where does that put us?
That is a Ben question, Ben.
Well, I mean, it's-
When a DOT said, that's too many, you can't do that. You shouldn't do that.
It's, but it is pretty common in zoning to get advisory opinions. You know, I'll use the city of Ashborough for an example. Anytime you have a rezoning, one of the things that they require, and it's part of their ordinance, is that you have either an advisory opinion, and I've seen sometimes it's just, it's just oral, you know, that you've contacted the, the city staff and agencies, specifically the fire department, to see if the plan, if there's any problems. What you're really asking is, can the fire trucks get in and out of the roads that you're proposing? And the ordinance doesn't say that, all right, if it, if you don't meet that standard, then you fail. But I have never seen a situation where that board would approve a request that doesn't comply with that. So I think, you know, I understand what, what you're saying is, you know, I think we have to kind of wait and see what, what kind of advisory opinions we're going to get from DOT. I think you guys are going to have to decide what type of weight that you want to give those advisory opinions. And, you know, that's, I think it's, I don't think it's a bad thing. I think it's a good thing to get that. But to say, to say that they have the ability to kill these projects, I think it's becoming more clear that they don't have that ability. But they are giving us advisory opinions. And, you know, if I'm an applicant, or if I'm a, a, you know, if I'm an applicant or an adjoining property owner who's not positioned to the application, I think that this board should look at that very seriously and, and, and give it a lot of weight. But, you know, I, I think, you know, you're, you're not required to, to follow exactly what the recommendation is, so. And as far as liability, I don't think you have liability. Obviously, you guys have, there's immunity standards that are built into you guys. The, you, you have a different threshold of liability the county does. It's a different standard, and it's, it's not negligence. It's gross negligence. And you'd have to show that you were almost doing something intentionally to have liability in that situation, to answer your question about liability.
And one other thing is, you, you've got another step to extend the amount of time it takes to get that zoning request. Would you say that'd be correct?
I'd say that's accurate. I know the last time we talked to the DOT, they said it, you know, in some cases, it could take them a few weeks to render an opinion. So yes, it could slow things down. And likely will.
But that's really on the applicant. That's just like getting a survey, or getting your site plan. That's, that's, that's going to, you know, be on them.
As part of the product.
Part of the process. I mean, like, trying to get a survey or a site plan right now in Randolph County with the number of surveys we have, surveyors we have here, it's really challenging, you know.
I know in High Point, they're going, seem to be going the other way. It might take you a year and a half to get a permit up there, and they, they're flipping around to figure out ways to make that a quicker process. I see this as adding to our process.
It, some of it does.
Well, when you're asking an outside agency such as DOT, just like you say, the surveyor, you find one. But when you're asking DOT, of course, they'll get to it. Just depends on how quickly they get to it in their own process. But it does add another step to the process of the rezoning.
It does.
And they, they do it in their own time?
And they do it in their own time. When you see, when you see a, like, we saw, we saw the big application this past year, Mr. Petty's farm, if, when you see someone who has experience and a detailed application, they bring that opinion with them. They've been doing that in the past. They brought that opinion to that application. So if you're an experienced land use developer, you, you bring that to this board anyway.
Before you even come.
Well, it's, it's a part of your application. That's part of your presentation, that you're giving that.
They've already done their homework.
Correct.
All right. Any other comments? Okay, we are having a public hearing, so I will open the public hearing if there's anyone here tonight that wishes to speak to this matter. Anyone here wishes to speak? All right. Hearing done, we will close the public hearing and ask the board to consider adoption of the ordinance as amended.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make, I'll make the motion to adopt the changes as required by North Carolina General Statute 160D and recommended by the Randolph County Planning Board, are hereby adopted as the Randolph County Unified Development Ordinance and shall take effect and have full power on July fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Motion and second. Further discussion, questions we've had, considerable, but anything else?
I just want to say, I mean, going through this whole process, seeing all this, I want to thank you and your staff, and the planning board especially, please extend our thank you for spending so much time working through this, because it's not a quick and easy little one-page document.
No.
Thank you.
You, you live with it, and you're going to be seeing it before we do, so.
I think it's absolutely phenomenal how thorough it is, and to know how far this has come over the years, because of all four hundred and fifty-four pages of it. For those, those out there in the audience that know that we've, we've read all four hundred and fifty-four pages, and I'm sure every planning board member ran, read all four hundred and fifty-four pages.
This has been Tim's life for the past year. He's spent a lot of time doing this. We, we think he's done a phenomenal job. I would like to point out, you know, we, we did look at Council of Government, and you know, they wanted sixty, seventy thousand dollars to do this job, but that just shows what a big job it was. But we were pleased with the outcome.
Well, we thank you. We thank the board, the staff, know lots of hard work, hours of developing this. And like I said, four hundred and fifty-four pages. We had one, one word missing.
That's great.
So, you've lived in- Well, I was, I just saw the ETJ thing, and then I was trying to read the whole paragraph, and I saw that did, something's, something's out of here, so.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to say for David Allen's benefit, he's always talking about history. The first zoning Randolph County did was in, after the zoo, which was back in nineteen seventy-three, and that was way before me. But the first zoning the county did was in nineteen seventy-nine, and it was in Trinity Township, because the city of High Point was going to come into Randolph County and zone into Randolph County. So the Board of Commissioners put zoning and subdivision and building inspections and all those things in place to prevent the city coming in and zoning in Randolph County.
And we had no land use planning.
We didn't have any planning.
We just put in zoning to block High Point.
Al, did you, you said nineteen seventy-nine, or did you mean seventeen seventy-nine?
I heard you. I heard you. Yeah. Wes Rock, we did have planning, we just had zoning.
I could, I could entertain you with several stories about the, the zoning, land use plan and zoning ordinance that we put in in the county, and I'll, I'll tell you one. We was having a public hearing up at Randleman. We had, we had public hearings all over this county for about a year and a half. And we were having one at Randleman High School, and we got those who wanted it and those who didn't want it. And this young lady gets up, and she's just railing on us, and she said, I don't want this. If I want to get out in my backyard buck naked, I want to be able to do that. And I said, ma'am, there's not one thing in this ordinance to stop you from going out in your backyard naked, but your neighbor, neighbors and their children might not like that. But we had lots of stories, but we got it done. All right. Any other business? And I want to thank all of you for your participation. But we had lots of stories, but we got it done. Alright, any other business? And I want to thank all of you for your participation. Oh, we did? Alright. Those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Those no, and it is officially adopted. Thank all of you for participating. Our folks at home, thank you for watching tonight, and, uh, we'll be back at our regular August board meeting. So, is there any other business to come before this board tonight?
Move to adjourn.
We have a motion, we are adjourned. Thank all of you again. Thanks, Ben.
You going to coast?
I'll thank them. Yep.